Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out. I would like to call this regular meeting Lahuna City Council to order. Today is February 5th, 2024. The time is now 6:00 PM. If you will all rise for our invocation, which will be given by Councilwoman Pantoia.
Dear God, we come before you today as public servants, seeking your guidance and wisdom. We ask that you grant us the ability to listen deeply, think critically, and act compassionately. May our decisions be guided by a commitment to the common good and the well-being of all residents. Help us to work together in unity and respect, and may our efforts bring about justice, peace, and prosperity for our city, as it is written in Psalm 36:9. With you is the fountain of life; in your light we see light. May your light guide us in our deliberations and decisions. Amen.
If you'll stay standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Stoker.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochola.
Here.
Pantoia.
Here.
Rickoff.
I'm here.
All right, minutes of the previous meetings, two of them, we'll do them separately. So if I could have motions on each of those.
Make a motion to accept a regular meeting minutes of January 16th, 2024.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have one correction that I'd like to propose. In the commentary about reading Rick's letter, it says that it was a resignation letter, and this is a theme with me, words matter, it was not a resignation letter, it was an announcement of his retirement. And there's, I think there's a substantial difference between a retirement and a resignation, and I'd like that to be corrected in minutes, please.
Anything else? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Do I have a motion on the second?
I'll make the motion for the second set of minutes for the January 30th special meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. I'm going to switch this agenda up just a bit. Instead of citizen participation right now, we're going to have FBLA recognition right now. So if I could have all the FBLA young adults that are here tonight come up to the front. This group, myself, and Councilwoman Maureen actually had the privilege of judging some events for FBLA at the college this year. I put the word out to Shauna as soon as this was completed, come up to the mic, please, to send some kids. She let me know that we had 37 out of 42 kids at Lahuna qualify for state. So tonight, we have four of them here with us. If each of you will come up and say what your category was, and a little bit about yourselves still.
Hi, my name is Olivia Smith. I'm a junior at Lahuna Junior Senior High School. My category was public service announcement, and it's where you make a video, the second video, on a topic that they gave you. And my team placed first, which means re-qualified for state.
Who was your judge?
You, Mr. Rickoff.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Del Rio, I'm the president of FBLA. I'm a senior, and me, I was in a group, and we went for interim, not interim, parliamentary procedure, and we placed third. And it was, it was fun. We learned like a lot about it, but it was just very hectic for us, but we got it.
My name is Reese Addington, I'm a senior at Lahuna High School, and I'm also the social media representative for FBLA. And me and my cousin did visual design, and we placed third.
My name is Morgan Foxhoven, and I'm a senior at a junior senior high school. I'm also the treasurer of FBLA, and my category, I took two tests, one accounting, one economics. I placed fifth in accounting, third in economics, and I'll be going to state. And also, at the state, we'll be doing the 17-page report on the chapter local business event as well.
Awesome.
Morgan was in our youth commission, and he also was one of the ones that helped paint the train on the hill, and he owned, fantastic job. Thank you, Morgan.
Before I let you guys go, when is state?
April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd.
And where's that going to be at?
The Gaylord in Denver. They're really nice, yeah.
So good luck to all of you. Thank you for representing Lahuna so well, and we hope to see you guys at a report for how state goes.
I didn't have any of the students from Lahuna in job interview, but it was a very impressive group of students, and if anybody gets a chance, if they ask you to judge, I encourage you to do it. I was a two-time state officer in FBLA, it's one of my claims to fame, and why I have a lot of roots here in the Arkansas Valley, because there were so many kids from the schools here that I got to be friends with during my time on the state officer team. So huge fan of FBLA, super proud of you guys, glad that the tradition is still growing strong here at Lahuna. So, well done, 37 out of 42, that's very impressive. Have fun in state.
All right, now we will do citizen participation for anybody that would like to say something. You can come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. You guys pick however you want to do it.
Your lead, doesn't it? Yeah. Douglas Golden, 1316 Lincoln Avenue. I hadn't received my reno for the golf course, but my brother did, and I thank those involved that got a few ideas on it. Thank you, Bill. It's a good start. I missed the last meeting. I went on the side, down the side for the golf course. Pretty sad. It says that there's no dining facilities at the golf course. How many years has that restaurant been out there? It also, at that point, there were no scheduled events, and I know Lahuna Trading, their tournament is already planned and scheduled. And the things that were on the letter to members needs to be on the website, but the website has to be pertinent. It needs...
We're right in the middle of redoing all of our website.
Well, you know, like I said, when it says there's no dining out there, I'm sure the restaurant owner out there would be sad to hear that. But anyway, and then also, I'd just like to, I have other ideas, and I know other people have ideas. I still would like to see a committee formed, and I will again offer my assistance on that, either chairing it or just being on it, it doesn't matter. Because there are ways to save money out there, and additional ways to make money for the city, and I think those are two objectives we should be looking at. But again, thanks for what you've done thus far, but the work, you know, people that come in, how are they going to know that there's a discount if they take their, where they're staying to go play, if it's not on a website? They're not going to call the golf course and say, well, they might, and say, are there any specials, but, you know, in this day and age, people that travel are on their phones, are on the websites, and if the information isn't there, we're missing opportunities. Thank you.
Bob Houston, own property over there at 701 West Fourth Street. That's the right behind Valley Plumbing, be it what you call the Texaco warehouse where it used to be, right there by Bob's?
Or Standard Oil, if you know where it is.
Or Standard, if we do, yeah, we already give up. By the way, the star's still there. The reason I'm here tonight, we could go today, I noticed in the back of my warehouse, somebody had been scraping my property to accommodate the brick-and-tile...
Trail?
Trail, which they opened up my fence to get back there to do it. Now, I did, that day approached the project manager, I found him over there on 10th Street, and introduced myself, who I was, and how come, and all I wanted out of the deal was that you kind of put some dirt back there where you got it from, and some gravel, you know, he was nice enough, whoever did the bobcat work, put my fence back up, I mean, up there, but that's all I asked him to do. He said he would check into that. It's been a week later, as of today, and nothing's been done. I just wanted for the record...
When I went by earlier, because I walked it, it looked like they'd shot in gravel and compacted it.
On the north side?
On that north side of your property.
I was there today, Rick, I don't know what time of year you were there.
Right about 4:30 when I went through.
Well, you could tell where the bobcat, but I just wanted to be on record that I addressed it?
Taylor said they'd take care of it. It looked like it to me, Bob, when I was walking by.
Okay, well, I'm not asking much, I just want to put back, now, the foreman asked me, I mean, the project manager said, he was informed by his foreman that he had permission to come on my property to do it. Well, it's pretty obvious, he didn't get direct communication for the job. All I want done is just put it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, is that brick-and-tile moving on schedule for you?
Yes, it is.
Good.
It'll be done by the 15th.
It's looking good every day.
Yep.
Edward Vila, citizen. The last couple of meetings, it's not good to have Joe nominate the selection committee for the interim city manager. He could have used the city clerk, who's very efficient, to contact the other council people, as they too have good sense to also know qualified citizens. Council people deserve respect and dignity also. Also, less than a week was given for the candidates to submit an application. That's super short, and I'm not sure how it was advertised, but we can do better than that. My comment now to what I'm going to say now is no reflection on any of the current committee's integrity, but there are two brothers-in-laws on that committee, and who were named to that group, plus other political influence banking was done. Some folks say it was not good, and I'm kind of have to agree with them. Also, this process smacks of egotistical need over good city government sense. Period. I believe it would have been easier for the council to appoint Bill Jackson as the interim city manager. He is multi-credentialed and has had the title of assistant manager for many years now. That would have made it easier. Other supervisors could have huddled with him to shift some of his responsibility till a new city manager is selected. Also, Mr. City Attorney, could you please explain the serial sunshine violation to the council? I'm not sure that that was talked about at the last meeting that was on the tail end of it, not the last meeting, but one of the meetings this year. You're familiar with that, I'm sure.
I'm not.
You're not? That's where Paul here calls Damon and tells him a particular subject, he hangs up, and then he calls Jeremiah, and then Jeremiah, I mean, Paul continues on down the line, talking about the same subject. Serial violation of the sunshine laws. How do I know? They caught me years ago. Anyway, check with your friend without having that look on your face. Also, what is the topic for the executive session? In the future, should topics should always be shown on the agenda? Citizens have the right to know in advance without asking? Transparency, remember? And the other thing I had is, where exactly is the parcel of land exchange between the city and Inspiration Field? Rick?
1525 Lewis.
1525 Lewis?
The old Monterton place.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
It's in that bowl.
Thanks, Ed. You bet. Anybody have any questions?
Just for, remember to say your address at the beginning before you start. Say your address.
Got it.
Anyone else for citizen participation?
Needling me.
All right. Hey, Bill, did Todd have an update for me?
Yeah, he was going for some traffic control now, because they're shorthanded, but they have, they've got warrants issued, they've, I'm still right in the middle...
Come up to the mic, please, Mr. Jackson. And Pam, this is, this is just an ongoing situation, so I want to make sure that people do know that we are aware of it, and we are working towards, you know, bringing this person into custody. If you just want to give the full scope real quick, and...
Yes, we had an incident this weekend, there were multiple reports of shootings at three different addresses. One person sustained an injury from a gunshot. Those persons were identified, and warrants were issued, and that process is ongoing at this very moment.
And I just know Todd and the rest of the PD have been working extremely hard since this happened, so when I seen him up here, I didn't know if we had any more news than that, but...
He just showed me a text, he's got CBI here also.
Yeah, CBI.
And real, real gratitude and thanks to those fellows that worked hard, that worked all night, and all day, and they're just, what a great team we got.
And thanks to all the other agencies that helped out, CSP, Sheriff's Department, you know, and CBI coming down today, so, thanks.
We have multiple contacts and agency assists, and they always come to help.
Have we heard any update on the child?
I have not. It was a...
Non-life-threatening?
Non-life-threatening.
So just for some of the audience members that may be concerned with the locations where the shootings occurred, could you elaborate on that just briefly, please?
I don't know all of the locations, the...
I do.
Person that was sustained injury was...
Yeah, so we had one on the 1500 block of Bellevue, and that was the first report we got in, then we had another report shortly after at 5th and Lewis, and then the third report came out of the 800 block of Santa Fe. So all three were different incidents, but we believe it's part of the same thing, so we're looking for information, if someone knows, get with their local PD, and turn in, you know, any information you think may be pertinent, so, that's what we know at this time. Mr. Golden?
Do you have any information on who you're looking for, that, if anybody in the...
We have warrants for their arrest, we know.
Well, I know, but I mean it...
What I do know is it's a juvenile, so it's, you can't really...
We can't say. Ongoing investigation. You never comment on ongoing investigation.
And a juvenile.
And a juvenile.
But his description is about six foot three, gray hair, has a twin brother?
No, that's not right.
Don't look any, you don't have to look very hard, I'm right here.
Thank you for that update, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Can you send Todd a message for me and let him know we talked about it?
Yes, sir, I will.
So he doesn't have to come back? Mrs. Denehy. We are now going to have a tourism update.
Nice t-shirt. Thank you. So thank you guys for having me, I'm glad there was an update for that, so thank you for allowing me time for that, Joe, I think it's important for the citizens. Pam Denehy, Director of Tourism, it's been a while since I've been here, so I always kind of like to take a step back and remind everyone what tourism is about, especially for the new city council members. So Lahuna Tourism began in 2010 as an advisory board that manages and oversees the expenditures of a 4.5% lodging tax on all eight facilities in Lahuna. Just a reminder that the lodging tax is not part of the general city fund, it goes into a separate fund that is overseen by a tourism advisory board.
So it's not a part of the general fund?
Not a part of the general fund, yes.
Want to double check?
Yeah. So not a part of the general fund. Our chairman is John Yergert, Ron Davis serves on that committee, Colleen Oakwist, Tracy Salzbriner, Rick Walner, city manager, and the mayor. So currently, we have Rick Klein and Joe Ayala. As a result of the lodging tax ordinance this year, we collected $227,000, 566, um, 227, 566, and 28 cents. That's 28 cents, that's important, yeah. So just to give an update of what, what we've been working on for tourism, we are able to leverage a lot of grants that we receive from the Colorado Tourism Office. So one of the grants that we have just received, it's a two-year grant, $75,000, and we have a match of $7,500 that will total 8,000, 82,000, I'm not good at numbers, am I, Alisa?
No.
$82,000, $82,000.
I'll make sure she doesn't spend more than she's supposed to.
Yeah, yeah. So this was one of only seven grants awarded in the state, we were only one of two rural communities. The idea behind the grant is a marketing campaign, and it's entitled "You Would Never Guess." It, I can get really technical, but the easiest way to say this is, we're, for two years, we're going to be spending this money, we've, we're working with a consultant that will help us with the expenditures, we're going to do a video promoting Lahuna that will then point you to a landing page, what will be on, which will be on our website, which will have a unique URL, that will then have ads through digital campaigning, that, then we can check the SEO, which is a search engine optimization. So I know there was a lot of technical stuff in that, but the important thing is that we're going to be, this is our first marketing campaign that we've been able to embark on, to be able to do it for two years, to receive this grant is very exciting for us, and so I'd like to read you the script that we approved, we don't have anything else right now, we're working on, there's a lot that goes into it, again, this is two years, but the script will sound something like this. Who would guess all this was here? A region, a region rich with history and full of unexpected adventure, a place where you are surrounded by wonder, up, down, all around, a place to see, smell, hear, and experience the past, to disconnect from distractions and reconnect with what matters. Who would ever guess you would find all of this and more in Lahuna? Visit Lahuna and experience the unexpected. So that's going to be the video that will be seen, we're gonna, the Tourism Board did see a draft, we've, we're working on getting that updated with the right photos, videos. We did have a co-op a couple years ago that helped us get some B-roll, really good photos and video, but we, we want them to come back again with a second draft, so we're working on that, don't have anything to show the council just yet, but when we do come out with that, we'll be happy to share that, and again, it will be on a landing page that we will direct people to see. And all of these things that they're talking about will be places like Ben's Fort, the Kishari Museum, the dinosaur tracks, of course, tarantula tourism, and all of those different things that we want to promote. So, any questions on that? I know it's kind of technical with that grant, but we're very excited about it.
I do just want to add, before we get into questions, on that video, it has to be through those, that company that did that, we can't just pick local photographers to shoot videos, it's tied into the grant that way, so...
Yes.
Just make sure that everyone knows that.
Thank you for the clarification, yeah. And that, this grant, although it's through the Colorado Tourism Office, it's a federal grant that they received, so we're under even more specific guidelines than, when we get a Colorado Tourism grant, it's different to spend, and so we're having to go through all the federal procurement, so ours, vendors, everything had to be approved before we even wrote the grant. And it was just, and then I'll, to even add on that point, the video, the landing page, all of that stuff was clarified in the grant, so that was part of this whole campaign.
So, just, you said it was a 7,500 match, that money will come from your guys' farm?
The Tourism Board.
So, just, just to note that that's where that money's coming from.
Yes, thank you for clarifying, yeah. And this is a relatively, as far as grants are concerned, this is a relatively low match, so it's for us to get what we got out of that, and to leverage that additional funding is, is really incredible. The next thing...
Will it like pop up when you're on YouTube, or will it be on broadcast, or...
Yeah, so I think we're going to be able to even be on this campaign, figure out ways to use the video, I mean, the main thing, the, the really exciting thing about this campaign is we're working with this consultant to help us with some really good catchy ways to, to do the advertising, so a lot of the advertising will point to that, but yeah, we can, we'll own the video, we own the footage, we own the script, we own the voiceover, and all of that will be part of that. Yep. Any other questions? Okay. The next thing we're going to be working on in 2024 is a new Visit Lahuna website. If you've had a chance to visit our website, it's, it's a great website, but we did it in 2017, and so it's just time that it needs to be updated. We were able to do a update to a page, it's the Tarantula Fest page, if you get a chance to go and look at that, I can go on there and I can update it quickly. The technology in 2017 was very different, so making changes to, we ran into this on Tourism Board, on the eat, and the stay, and the play, changing pictures, or changing much content, anything other than content is, is challenging, and as a director of tourism, I am, I am the one that does that, so we're looking forward to a refresh and a redesign that will also take into account our new brand that we had, we did have done, this is the one with the tarantula, but in 2017, we didn't have our Visit Lahuna logo with our rich history, unexpected adventure tagline, so that will be incorporated through that as well.
Will the QR code still work?
Yep, QR code, so we'll still have the same visitlahuna.net, it'll just look a little different, but I, I think we're just getting started on that, so I really like what we did with the Tarantula Fest page, more pictures, less content, so I think it might feel a little bit more like that, but when we get down that road, we can, we'd be happy to share where we're at. Other thing for 2024 that we're going to be prioritizing is short-term rental data. So short-term rental is an easy way of saying, or a hard, I mean, a technical way of saying VRBOs and Airbnbs, this has been something we've been hearing about, and our partners at Colorado Tourism Office have found some data, they found some companies that can help us with this, and so we've talked at the Tourism Board about hiring a firm that can help us go about doing this, because we've, we've made calls, Alisa's made calls, we've even had our wonderful partner at KOA make calls, because some of what he's doing is Airbnb, and we've been unsuccessful. So the initial, we've gotten a quote from a company that can help us, and their initial report is that we have nearly 20 listings in and around that would be under our lodging tax, that we're missing out on probably more than $10,000 in lodging tax funding. Now, that was just their report, we haven't dug into that, but I, the board fills, and I agree, that it's important to do some research on this, and how we can collect that additional lodging tax. Of course, when the ordinance was written in 2010, this wasn't really a thing, short-term rentals, and there's a lot of cities and municipalities that are having conversations, so the Colorado Tourism Office, again, is a great partner to, to help us navigate through this. So there's a possibility... So there's a possibility we could see that additional increase in our lodging tax collection. Next thing we're working on in 2024 is, I know I mentioned CTO a lot, but again, they're a great partner. We were able to leverage another opportunity where this is, they call it a grant, but we're not receiving money. It's the Destination Development Mentor, where we will receive 100 hours of mentoring, which is pretty much consulting. And what we decided to apply for on that is, tarantula tourism and the Tarantula Fest have been phenomenal, period. We have found that, and we knew we were going to have some responsible visitation issues that we would need to address. And so we are taking this time and this 100%, 100 hours of consulting to bring together, convene some stakeholders in law enforcement, private property owners, some of our partners at Comanche Grasslands, to have conversations about how we can be more proactive about responsible visitation to visit the tarantulas and when we're on public land. So we're really excited about this opportunity because we want to make sure that the people we're inviting here to visit the tarantulas are, respect the land and the tarantulas as much as we do. And so the idea behind this is we're hoping we'll come out with some actual language versus right now, we're kind of using just basically no trace principles. But this will be specific to Lahana and what we're wanting to say, and then some ways that we can implement it on our website and even come up with possibly a marketing campaign or a PR campaign to really get that word out. Any questions on that one? We've, I've reached out to all of our partners to be a part of that stakeholder group, and we've, they've all said yes and are very pleased to be involved with this because we find it, it's very important, very important for us. The other thing that, if you weren't aware, the United States of America and the state of Colorado will mark two important milestones in 2026. The 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the Colorado's 150th anniversary. So Governor Polis created the America 250, Colorado 150 Commission to lead the state's commemorative endeavors. So I have been asked to be a part of that advisory panel, and I know 20, thank you. I know 2026 sounds like a long ways away, but it's important. This is an important piece of our, obviously, our history in our country. So we have been meeting monthly of ways to do that, and it's really starting to gain steam here in 2024. So the main thing we'll be looking is really convening a cohort of people that want to help promote this. Again, it's a commemoration, not necessarily a celebration, and those are the words that they're choosing to use. So I'll be happy to give updates, and if anybody's interested in being involved, we're certainly welcoming that. But it's exciting to have Lahana and Canyons and Plains represented on that commission, or that advisory panel. Last thing, I will just, I'll punt to Rick on this one, but wanted to give, say that there's the multimodal project that we have been talking about for years. And years, and years. And for those of you that might not be aware, the idea behind the multimodal project is to have something of sorts, of a, kind of a welcome center idea that we have the bus, we have the train. We don't really have a welcome center here that we can take advantage of at the train station downtown here. So Rick received a grant, well, the City of Lahana received a grant, through CDOT, and they have awarded the contract to move forward. It's a 100% grant funded for multimodal design. That was applied for by the City of Lahana. So tourism is going to be a partner, but that's not a grant that we own. All of these CTO grants that I've been talking about are grants that we are managing and owning. Multimodal Project, he's also working with the city engineer, Martin. And so we will work closely with Martin, the Tourism Board, and make sure that we are lockstep in whatever we can do there, hoping that this will then lead, this initial phase is the design. And then once we get through that, then there could be more funding for construction.
Yeah, the CDOT put back $4 million for the construction of it.
So when was that grant received?
It was about a year ago, and they were supposed to give us one by, a contract by mid-January. And the person I was dealing with, they went through like three people. So now they're back to square one, trying to get somebody in to get the contracts out.
So we do have those funds?
Oh, yeah. And they're going to put the date out further because they can't, they can't get the contracts out. And it's just not just that one. They got them all wrong, but they can't get out. So yeah, no, it's a real problem for CDOT right now.
And that's through CDOT, we can't move on without that.
No, not until we get a notice to proceed. But, you know, it's just like with the trail. When you saw the notice to proceed, you saw how fast it went. Once they give you the okay, but you gotta have that piece of paper or else they don't pay for it, and it just turns bad. And I've been there, and we don't do that.
You did a lot of work on that, Rick, too, to see where the hangup was. And to see if we could extend it and not lose it.
Yes.
So thank you for that.
My pleasure. And, you know, the through train, car train, you know, they put study on hold until they get the segment between Denver and Colorado Springs done for Front Range Rail, so that way that they have, there's the whole segment. State of Colorado was one of two projects that the Federal Railroad Administration gave $500,000 to to jumpstart their projects. Of all the projects that you see going about with Amtrak and expanding out passenger rail, Front Range Rail, and one other is the top ones, and we're doing ones that got her done. So I feel pretty proud that they've continued in where they're at. You know, I know, just like you said about 2026, folks will see a train going down the spine of the Front Range if that boat goes through next year within a decade. And the through train, all the numbers are good. I fully expect it to go, and, you know, and I'm keeping my eye out on all that. Just because I retired doesn't mean that that goes bye-bye, you know? And I will be, and Bill and I have been having talks about the multimodal and stuff. And, you know, Martin and him will get that job done. And they know that they could turn to me for any help, but I doubt if they need me. But I'll be there at the design meetings and pick and choose, just like all the other citizens. And have fun doing it. Because that's the fun part.
Yeah.
It really is, to me.
So just to clarify, kind of, Damon, to your question about matching funds. You know, the way this grant works is it was CDOT, and it'll go to the city. Some of these grants run through tourism. This one won't run through tourism. But if and when we are able to apply for funding, there could be a possibility that we can use tourism dollars for match. But as you know, with grants, who knows what'll be available at the time? So, but that's, that's a plan and a good reason for kind of the Tourism Board being, saving the money in case a big project like this comes, because...
We need exhibits, we need furniture, you know? There's going to be a lot of items that grants don't pay for, you know? It's all the soft cost, as I always call it.
Yeah. So, just to give update there. So that's kind of what Lahana Tourism is working on from the local level. One of the other things that I was asked to, probably when I first started in this position, was to get involved with Canyons and Plains, and that's the Regional Heritage Tourism Group. And for those of you not aware, that services seven counties of Baca Bend, Crowley, Kiowa, Los Anamos, Otero, and Prowers. You know, Trinidad, Lamar, and Lahana are basically the hubs that see the most of the people that travel through that. So it's really important that Visit Lahana is involved with that organization. Rick Wallner used to be the president, and he served on our board. He serves on our current board for Visit Lahana. But he stepped down, and so I am currently the interim president until we find another plan.
So you're the interim?
Yeah, I am the interim for that.
A place for you to go, Rick.
So, yeah. It's a really important organization, and we didn't want to, it still needs to move forward. It is also, under Canyons and Plains, has taken the Santa Fe Trail Historic Byway under its umbrella, so that's something that's moving forward as well. So from a regional standpoint, you know, we are involved with tourism that's happening in the region. So we try to look beyond just Lahana and our partners out there. I talked a lot about this Colorado Tourism Office. I think it's important to note that I also am involved with a number of their committees. So I am a member of the Marketing Committee, and I try to speak up as often and as loud as I can about rural, and there's more than just mountains, and it's important that we have that represented in the advertising. I went through the Colorado Tourism Office Leadership Journey, and I currently am the Chair of that Alumni Subcommittee. And then I'm the member of the CTO Destination Stewardship Council. And I think a couple of you attended the workshops we had, and we will be having a draft strategic plan that comes out. The idea behind stewardship is what we're talking about here with the responsible visitation is how do we invite these people to come and, but to love it as much as we do as locals and leave it as good or better than when we left? Is kind of the idea behind that Destination Stewardship. So I'm really happy that CTO has made this a priority as well. The other hat that I wear that I think is important to just remind everybody is I was appointed to the Great Outdoors Colorado Board in 2019. I'm going to be officially reappointed for a second term on March 7. When I was originally appointed, I was CD4. But as you might know, now that we've, our, the lines are redrawn, I'm now, I'm one of the, representing CD3, which is one of the biggest districts of the state, so...
In the mountains, in Lahana?
Yeah, yeah. So that's sometimes a challenge, but, and I also am the current GoCo Board Chair. And I represent, as part of being on that, I'm on the CPW State Recreational Trails Committee. So I try to keep my finger on the pulse of what's going on locally, regionally, and statewide. So, a couple of events, I think it's going to be approved tonight. There's the Arkansas Valley, Arkansas River Basin Water Forum that's coming up in March. And of course, we have the Tarantula Fest, the Third Annual Tarantula Fest that is tentatively scheduled for September 27th and 28th. We're going to have our first meeting, I think, later in February. There's talks about expanding tours possibly to Sunday, but that's not something we've decided upon. It's just, the tours are really popular, so trying to find ways that we can expand those in a, again, sustainable and responsible way. We do know that the tarantulas also come out in the morning, so maybe it's a possibility to do a Sunday tour. But we're going to take a look at that and see if that's a possibility and if something that we can, we can add to this year. That's all I have. I tried to keep it short, Joe, but I realized I had a lot to share.
I have one more for you.
Okay, yeah.
And this is just because this was a big thing for us last couple of weeks, is Ben's Fort. Can you give us an update on Ben's Fort?
Yes, I can, and I was going to bring my phone. And I'd be, and Rick, I think you shared this statement. You know, we are, Ben's Fort is one of our most treasured tourist attractions here in Lahana. And I've even had some questions of, is Ben's Fort technically in Lahana? Yes, it's technically in Lahana. But as I read how the collection is, we collect on people that stay in the hotels, and Ben's Fort feeds into that. So we are partners with them, we monitored that closely. I do know that the second floor is a result of structural issues that they're working through. The other stuff that was mentioned, I think, was some things that they're working through as far as the living history and, and living history and the animals. But we will continue to partner and show up however we can and be a good partner to them.
Yeah, they came through and did an analysis on whether the livestock met the standard of care. And they had asked them to reduce the number, you know? So they could get, make sure the animals are properly cared for. And, but it didn't say what the reduction is. So I'm sure Doxins went bye-bye, is what I'm thinking.
And how is Ben's Fort funded? Just so everybody knows.
Thank you, yes. I love that leading question. Ben's Fort is part of the federal government. So it is not overseen by the City of Lahana or this county.
Or the Tourism Office.
Or the Tourism Office. So, other than being a partner and us, you know, making calls and inquiring, we have no oversight over that. And I will say, from conversations I've had with them, it is federal government. So as we know, money, even with our grant, we saw, takes a little longer. So probably getting the second floor open is going to take longer because they're waiting for those federal dollars to come through. So I think it's, safety is an important piece. And I know it's, it might seem frustrating, but we've got to make sure that the guests are safe. And if they don't feel like the second floor is structurally sound, then, then that is something that needed to happen.
But it's a federal agency that's, you know, National Park Service is part of your federal government, folks.
And I, and, you know, we've, I don't, I don't think we could even give them money if it was a possibility, because it's the federal government. So it's not, it's not a possibility.
But if anyone wanted to, they could write their congressperson, they can write NPS. And I'm just saying this because I know I got calls and emails. Rick and our county commissioners and Pam, we're all getting these same calls, and people are mad and they're upset. And yes, we also care about Ben's Fort. We don't want it to go away, but our hands are tied at that point to what we can do, so...
The commissioners couldn't get a call back either. Everybody was in the same boat.
And just like all of our tourism partners, you know, with the US Forest Service and the Kishari, I mean, they're our partners, and our job is to promote them. Our job is not to tell them what to do or tell them how to do their business. Just like, it's not our job to tell the hotels how to do their, to do business. You know, they're, they're, they collect the tax, and the attractions are our partners. And that's kind of as far as that goes.
Any questions for Pam?
No, just a comment. Thank you for all you do, Pam. And I think, when I go to the metro area and I visit with friends or people in the metro area, they used to ask me about, hey, what's the, how are the crops this year? Now they ask me about the tarantulas. So you have unseen agriculture as the number one thing that we're going for down here? And that was a gargantuan task to do there.
Yeah, I was just at a meeting the other day in Loveland, and they were asking me where I'm from, and they were like, "Oh, we can't wait to come and see the tarantulas." So it's, you know, and we, it's, we have great partnerships with even our students at the high school that are now taking up science fair projects and wearing our shirts proudly. So it's exciting to see that, so thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I mean this very sincerely. Your list of credentials, your appointments, the commissions you sit on, the boards that you work with, all of this stuff that you've done is very, very impressive.
Very.
Thank you.
I think Lahana is very, very lucky to have an eager people like you doing what you're doing. It's just very impressive. But the question that I have for you is, when do you find time to do your laundry?
That's what husbands are for.
He's watching movies.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you, guys.
Same thing for me, Pam. You know, you've excelled on everything that I've ever thrown your way, and you took it to a whole different level. And we can, as a community, can never pay it back. Thank you.
I appreciate it. And I love Lahana, so, just like everybody here it does and on the Tourism Board, and it's easy to promote and be passionate about something you love, so...
And if anyone has questions, or you have tourism meetings that are live streamed, or you can show up and ask those there, so...
Yeah, and our, yes, and our website has my contact information, my direct line, my phone number, and an email address. So you can call or email me, I'm always open to communication. Okay?
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloff, that is a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I have six liquor-related applications for the council to consider. The first one is an application for special events permit by Inspiration Fields for their third annual Mardi Gras party to be conducted on February 17 from 8:00 a.m.
for their 3rd Annual Mardi Gras, uh, party to be conducted on February 17th from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That application is in order, fees have been paid, posting's been accomplished, city management recommends favorable consideration.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, Inspiration Fields is requesting a special events permit for the 39th Annual La Junta Trading Golf Company Classic to be conducted on May 10th, 2024 from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That application is also in order, fees have been paid, posting's been accomplished and city management recommends favorable consideration.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
The, um, time on both the first one and the second one is 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM? That's a long day. I'm just kidding, is that like a standard license?
No.
Okay.
They, they pick their hours and how they, they choose to operate it. There can be multiple days involved with a special events permit.
Any other questions? All right, I'll ask for your vote. Lisa was eager, and I cannot go a meeting without hearing that song. That passes unanimously.
Physical therapy time.
Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, the Arkansas River Basin Water Forum has requested a special events permit for their 3-5 Local Leaders Dinner Reception and their 3-6 Water Forum Network Dinner. The 3-5 applies to March 5th and 6th, respectively. The time period's from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on each day. Proper posting's been accomplished, uh, fees have been paid, uh, city management recommends favorable consideration.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Say.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, Lowe's Travel, Lowe's Travel Stop doing business at 308 East First Street in La Junta has requested a renewal of their fermented malt beverage off-premises license, currently scheduled to expire on February 16th, 2024. That application is in order, uh, fees have been paid, city management recommends favorable consideration of the renewal.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, Yak and Yeddy Hotel Inn doing business at 1525 Lewis Street in La Junta has requested a renewal of their lodging and entertainment liquor license, currently scheduled to expire on March 6th, 2024. That application, renewal application is in order, fees have been paid, city management recommends favorable consideration.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, Walmart's asking for several actions, we'll need to take them separately. The first one's a renewal of their fermented malt beverage wine liquor license, currently scheduled to expire on March 29th, 2024. That application is in order, fees have been paid, city management recommends favorable consideration.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Sorry, didn't mean to step on you there. Finally, uh, Walmart has also asked for a ratification of their reported change of manager. That is associated with a liquor license application that you just completed. Fees have been paid, applications in order, city management recommends favorable consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the change.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. You said several, but I counted two.
That'd be a couple.
That'd be a couple.
Yeah.
Is that a friendly event though?
Can we, are the kids left? Was my pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah, was that lady auditioning for the job?
Yeah. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, uh, asked the council to consider a resolution authorizing the sale of real property. This is to Inspiration Field. Mr. Klein already answered, the address is 1525 Lewis. Uh, this is part of a transaction that gave us the opportunity to utilize EPA funds to be able to clear off the property. Uh, my recommendation is that you favorably consider this authorization.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move approval of the resolution authorizing the sale of the property at 1525 Lewis.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, a couple of things. This property, uh, how did the city come about this property?
From Inspiration Field. It was a property that was donated to them, uh, and it was one of our bigger gang activity homes. You know, because it was located right in the old, right next to the high school and, you know, cross-country and stuff and it was just hidden, and, uh, so, uh, they, they couldn't do nothing with it. Approached us and said, okay, we can get this down, you know, and they were going to put it up on market to sell it now. But that was a donated property to Inspiration Field, and we're just taking care of the property.
So is there any expense to the city on this?
EPA just did a time for the EPA budget.
So it has no utility to the city?
Zero.
When we turn it back, they're going to sell it?
They're gonna sell it, but it'll remain vacant. You can't build it on that. You know, you remember that one day Paul walked up on the, that, that, that's that.
Yeah.
That's what we, yeah.
Looked like he shared it.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, as a matter of introduction, uh, the police department has requested that we, uh, put some energy into our towing ordinance that will allow for tows to be done more rapidly and quickly than the prior ordinance, which required a, a sit-back period of 15 days. This now changes it to 72 hours, which will really help get these vehicles that are not operative, get them off the road and get the place looking better. So this ordinance speaks to that. I would hope that someone will ask me to introduce it by title only. No? No?
I'll make a motion that the, uh, resolution be introduced by title only.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, for the council's consideration, in first reading, cleverly entitled and ordinance amending the towing ordinance.
Uh, so we need a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just say, I kinda like this idea. I don't know how many times I've seen a vehicle with those red tags on them and they sit there so long that all the ink's worn off of them. Or they'll sit there till 15 days and get towed. So if there's not gonna be any action once they're tagged, I think it's good to get them off as soon as possible.
Could you hear that, Gary? No?
Yes, I want to have a question. Is it 72 hours from the time on the ticket or does it start at midnight the following day for three days?
72 hours from the time on the ticket.
Okay, and I wonder if there's a typo in the last word of section two?
I don't know, Gary, maybe there is. Thanks for calling me to bring that up to me and so we could have that done before we showed up, too. I appreciate that.
I think I saw it, I apologize. Should be office, or officer.
I gotta find it first.
Last word, section two.
Officer.
Apologize for the incorrect.
We have an ordinance that allows us to, even if it wasn't brought up, to correct those kinds of things without any action being taken, but so be it, okay?
So is this a violation that will be handed directly to the person? Is that how that works out?
Well, most of the time it ends up being stuck on the windshield.
And, and then subsequently towed, and then it'll be on the vehicle owner, if they want it back from their tow company, to go pay the bill.
That's true.
I just, I just wondered, is it says a written notice, a violation shall be issued immediately to the owner of the vehicle?
Correct, the owner's name would appear on the citation.
And you would leave that on their car if you don't contact them directly?
Or hand it to a person.
And so then they could pay for the tow bill, get their vehicle back and go put it back?
They wanna be in that situation here.
What are you planning to do?
I, I think part of the problem here too is, you know, they would move it because they knew they had 15 days and then it would restart it all over again, correct? Yeah.
That's correct.
So what's the time from the vehicles? After 72 hours and the vehicle's towed, what's the time that it's deemed an abandoned vehicle and the city can sell it?
Well, the city's never gonna sell it. The tow company is gonna take physical possession of it. That creates an opportunity for them to assert an artisan's lien, a storage lien on the, the vehicle, and they would sell it, either as an abandoned vehicle or what have you, but once it's towed, we're done with it.
So who's responsible for the title search, the tow company?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff, or that's me. Mr. Maloff, how do you want me to, how do you want us to proceed on this? Uh, just so the, the council knows, I had one, um, person apply for the interim city manager. Um, that was Mr. Bill Jackson, um, so how do you want us to proceed?
Well, it might be slightly premature to take formal action. You can recommend, um, to make that, uh, position available to Mr. Jackson, but there's gonna be some details that need to be ironed out. And that, I think, will start with an executive session to decide what the parameters are that you're, you're willing to give in terms of benefits and, and so forth. So my recommendation would be that we have a short executive session with action to follow. Probably needs to be a communication between the board and Mr. Jackson before we reconvene. And remembering that your motion for executive session now, if you're gonna say we're gonna do some negotiating, you have to mention in your motion concerning Mr. Jackson's contract or whatever the thing is. We have to give the populace some hint of why we're going in there. It's negotiations.
Sorry. So, but then we have to say his name? Right, we have to say his name?
Just Danson.
So you're gonna go into the next session now?
Yeah, that'd be my suggestion.
Then come out and finish the rest of the meeting?
Yeah, we'll do business after. So, you know, normally when Adrian's sitting here and they say, Adrian, we're not doing any business after this time, we're going, but we're gonna do business right after.
Um, I motion for us to go into executive, um, session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS 24-6-402-4E for discussion, um, with the interim city manager selection, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we will go to the utility boardroom and then we will be back. You can leave that on. If you guys wanna hang out, I don't know, it might be 10 minutes, it might be 15 minutes.
It's not gonna be long, guys.
Yeah. Yes, this was gonna be, yeah.
I think this is, he needs to do that and record.
We're not, did you already work, so you stay right there and then I'll get, fix up when we're done.
Okay. Include me in the email.
Thank you.
I need to get this on the city letter, get Rick's signature, so would you take care of that? I don't have any city letter.
I want to talk to you about, you have a new connection that, see, I live in a country that's harsh if you want or just don't care, so there's a third, yeah, there's boundaries. Really, I'm just concerned that it's gonna be very, but I've had several reports that, 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 yeah.
I'll, I'll ask, maybe Rick knows, see if I can find out, okay? And I'll let you know.
You have to go through ordinances and, you know, what can you put there, like no restaurants or residential area?
Well, there's, we already have an ordinance in place called a zoning ordinance.
Yeah, right.
So if they buy the property, they have to conform to that ordinance. Yeah. Yes, I'll, I'll see if I can find that. Yeah. I'll see what I can find out.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Work in front of your house, you know? You know, get the ordinance for cars not being lived in front of houses. Uh, now it's sort of unenforced, but what is it now?
What do you think?
You know, this is better than TV.
Yeah.
All this time, I've missed all this.
Oh. And you're learning something.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And so the towing.
I do.
I've got a situation over there on, uh,
Oh, cool.
Fifth and Fourth Street.
That's what I thought.
Over there by, uh, Gardner.
Oh, you do? Love how it is.
Uh, we've got vehicles. They're being worked, I think you know where it's located, right? Right there by Black Hills. With the old railroad tracks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, with the old there.
Are you on the south of them?
That's what, you know, the warehouse I was just mentioning earlier?
They used to be a.
Texaco, Texaco Warehouse?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that building there.
That's yours?
That's mine. And then Eddie Cataris owns those trailers right there. Okay, what if his rental? He's got some parked cars right along the, the street there. I know it's a dirt, I know it's a dirt street, but it's still a street. And I've talked to.
Old teen people.
I've talked to the code officers, I've talked to the man himself, and he said he was checking to it, fix you. And they're still sitting there. So this right here that I just read, what they just put together, might put a little more bite to it. And I'll just wait to make the comments another day. Because I guess this thing's gonna come into effect till, uh, March the 15th. So the cars will be there for him to tag and mostly what happens.
Yeah. It's too bad we couldn't put something in that ordinance or resolution to remove cars that are junked in people's front yards.
Oh, yeah. Well, this kid likes to work on cars. And I'm going, uh-uh, you do the, you, you, I don't care what you do on the other side, you're fans there, you know? But this is the street. And I've been there since, well, I've been there since 72 and I bought the building in 77 from old Bob Cox, the old rotor, rotor man, the guy that bought potato chip.
Yeah, I, I got Bob Cox's, uh,
Yeah, I I got Bob Cox's uh, somehow he got uh a bunch of old uh movies where they used to play him for the public on a disc.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
And I gave him twenty bucks for him, he gave me a whole bunch of uh discs along with the player.
We still got railroad ties uh still over there that uh, uh, well, I, it's a street, it's garden streets, what it is. I went too happy here while back, they they had a backhoe come back in there and take some of them out because they were sticking too high up, I go, why didn't you just uh break some uh robe uh gravel and just bury it in one mess? And now they pulled them off.
Yeah.
Whatever, it's it's your call. I was pretty proud of them, I knew what they went to, you know, part of our history.
Yeah.
That's why we're building, that's why we're building that brick and tile sidewalk along there, oh, I was not happy. I went back there and go, what the hell is this? They took my dirt and filled the side of that. No, no wire, how come?
Yeah.
Yeah, the old boy told me, he says, well, I talked to the foreman, they said they talked to the owner, I go, oh.
I think T L M will make good on it.
They will, I think they will, but I just wanted for the record.
Yeah.
That council knew what I had in mind. And Rick knows it too, you you notice, he jumped in the middle of that.
Yep.
Well, I don't, I was there today and I don't think anything been uh, but he's telling me maybe after four thirty, I go, all I wanted was, I mean, when they went in there at the Bobcat, they didn't scrape, just one pass. They went like six times across the property and took it over there, pushed it up there against their sidewalk. I wasn't too unhappy, I I got to the point where I thought, well, you know, you're gonna do this to me, I might just bring my tractor in and pull what I got on right there back on my property.
Yeah.
But I, but I'm not gonna go to the street, all I want them to do is just make it right.
Like it was before?
Like it was before, had no right to pull that fence down. It wasn't, it wasn't.
They didn't even notify you in advance?
Nothing, nothing. Well, the foreman told, I mean, the project manager says, well, the foreman said it was okay, I go, you look at the owner, okay, I'm telling you right now, just make it good, put the dirt back. Put a little bit of gravel on the top of it, I'll be happy because that's the way it looked when he tested it, okay? Well, he was nice enough to put the fence back up when he went through the the gate there. It was pretty obvious it was Bobcat because he left his marks, and I haven't touched anything since.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'll be back there tomorrow to see if if uh T L M went back there, I'm not asking for a lot, just put it back. I think they will, they've been here too long not to do so, you know what I mean?
Yeah. They ought to be able to handle that.
Well, they'll be able to do that. Now, maybe if they come and ask me, oh, okay, I'll, okay, I'll tell you what, you take what you have, whatever, dump me a load of dirt right here, I won't call it even. Well, they haven't dumped, they got a pile right over there on that uh western uh valid plumbing right there, if you noticed over there, there's a couple of big.
And I don't see, yeah, I don't see how you uh, they can't uh say that they don't put, they can't run asphalt on the pockets.
Yeah.
What? Well, why did they do that asphalt on the sides there of the sidewalk that was put in?
Well, the asphalt that's on Third Street and Fifth Street, I noticed they, when they cut that, they took part of the asphalt out of the street, your streets, our streets.
Yeah.
You know. Well, I noticed the last couple few days they put it back. And it looks good, I mean, one thing about it, it lit up the place over there because that that sidewalk goes right back to my place, right around the corner, down through the road, away we go. I told little Rick, I says, well, you know, I've seen a lot of bikes, I've seen a lot of four-wheelers, you name it, you're gonna have them coming down that runway, I'm gonna tell you that right now. You're gonna, you're gonna have to watch it a little bit.
And the kids that ride those little motorbikes, they're gonna control it all.
That's right.
Until one gets hurt on Third Street or Fifth. We didn't know. They're gonna control the traffic.
And that's true, I have seen them up by my warehouse.
Yeah.
Well, see, I put a, put some T-Post out there, I don't know if you've been by there ever, but anyways, it's just a barbed wire around it, the reason I, it's just a midship street. Well, people were going back to the warehouse there, parking, doing drugs, making out and all this stuff like that, I said, enough's enough. So that's why I put it, what I did, I made to talk to Black Hills over there. Hey, you guys, you know, you guys been broken in a couple of times, I'll tell you why you getting broken a couple of times here while back. You see those big lights you got in the back there?
Yeah.
Get them on. Okay. The neighborhood watch.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad I came, I really, I'm learning a lot.
And there's more to come.
Oh, yeah.
Cause you're gonna have tons of people watching.
Well, it's like I told the wife, I says, you know, Rick stepped in there, there's gonna be, this this will be quite, I won't say a circus, but I'll say it'll be quite a ride.
Yeah, and he'll be leading the pack.
And simple fact is, he don't have the title anymore, but he can still be in the eyes of.
Yeah.
What's going on.
Eyes of the council. Reported to V J.
Uh, it'll be interesting how things, like you said before, Ed, you know, we got some new blood up there, we got new people, you know, and I knows they're often quiet and I'm going, okay. Gotta speak up, come on now, guys, speak your mind, this is what you gotta do it, that's why you're voted in, your council seat.
Yeah.
Right or wrong, get your opinion out there and chew on it, if you don't like it, spit it out.
Yeah.
It's that simple.
Don't huddle it in your mind.
Right, don't get yourself stressed to the.
Cause you'll lose sleep at night.
Oh, you will. You will, if you didn't get it off your chest, it'll never leave there and it'll bother you. It is what it is.
Yeah.
Well, politics of this and that, whatever, it's it's a hard, it's a hard thing to do and and I always believed just, you know, keep the majority happy.
Yeah.
That's all you gotta do, because you're not the other side.
That's the answer to the future.
That's the future.
I always tell kids, I say, do the right thing, and you're, it's up to you, not up to me. Hell, I'd already lived.
I tell some of my sisters, you know, I look at, I don't think to do a very good job or something, but you guys are coming up, you can change a lot of things that you shouldn't. You don't mind me, I suppose?
Me?
Yeah.
Same?
I'm seventy-two, so we're not too far apart.
No. We were in the same generation.
That's right. I wouldn't trade for anything in the world.
Me either.
Hell, no, not not what I see coming.
Even though I used to go through front yards and side yards to mow lawn when I was a kid.
Yeah.
Fifty to seventy-five cents.
Right.
You know that big empty lot down there by uh Scap Brothers?
Right.
North of it?
Right.
Me and another guy went in there and the weeds were that big, like Christmas trees.
Oh, gee.
We went in there and we were ten, eleven years old, we got a saw buck each for doing the whole.
Wow.
Are you kidding me? And loading them on a trailer to haul out.
I made a dollar eighty an hour working for Leo Kepner. I was in the grocery business.
Was that your first job?
My first one was actually over there at Rhodes Food Center in Rocky Ford with uh the grocery store again.
Yeah.
And that's when I, after doing, well, let's see, that was, that was a buck sixty-five an hour, Leo offered me a dollar eighty.
You look back, you know, whole recount, order more.
But then I always offered to work uh as a salesman for one of the big uh chip companies, so that's when I started to say that.
Hi, Val.
Never looked back.
Oh, I'm sitting and waiting for them to get through with the executive uh session at the city council.
Member under service in garage?
Yeah, yeah, I got a ride with uh Chandler, Ochoa.
That was my first job while I was in high school, sixty-five cents an hour.
Wow, wow, you know, that was pretty good looking.
No.
It was, it was.
If you really, I mean, you, I believe in location, location, location.
Traffic. Yeah, I thought so, and there was something else I was worried about.
I mean, it was easy, I like how the city would have put that little.
Some other kind of.
In there like that, but you don't make the trip.
Oh, I know what it is, oil industry too, I went out and got the oil at the uh Walmart.
Oh, yeah, La Hana got, oh my god, La Hana got.
And.
A lot of our community.
Oh, yeah, I I I get it, it falls on oil.
Manzanilla and uh La Hana here, a little bit of swing.
He's always done that, I don't know why, exactly.
On their farming and and industries that we've done with railroad.
Oh, no, no, nothing's going down right now, we're just waiting for them to get out of the executive. And I brought a person in, I was just re, but it probably won't be very long.
Was puzzling is the population state.
Really work like I thought it would, I thought they would really consider candidates, but it turns out, well, you know, Bill Jackson is really, he's a.
I think a lot of the people of the entire.
They're just gonna have to.
Yeah. I'm noticing that already.
Oh, you could build a vibe already.
But the regrettable thing about that is, there's people here that don't see enough, so they high tail it up to the metro.
And this is just for to her anyhow.
Then I'd be the opposite.
Somebody that wants it permanently.
Well, the the thing too is, we have classroom unions down here that, you mean, you're still here?
And I've got plenty to write about.
Our people do, I got a job, why would I wanna go somewhere else? When you make more money.
Program, four of them made state, they're going to the state, ding, but I I miss their names, so I'll have to call tomorrow to Melanie or I think I'll probably call.
For the weekend.
That's it. I love, I love bubble.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a little, it's a, it's a lot different than.
She's the mother of the curly headed kid.
The front range and every, every one of them's got their own personality and it's not very good.
All right, good to hear from you.
Kids, they live in Portland.
Oh, really?
And Windsor.
Okay, well, you.
Windsor's a boom in town.
Oh, yeah.
It's going crazy.
You know something?
Yeah.
When you hear like Greeley and some of those front runners, I like, whoa, my gosh. Holy cow. But then you go again, they, a lot of the bickers uh they're moving to these guys and and like you said, they're just growing like this.
Yeah.
You know, when you used to go down Academy there in Colorado Springs, you would never dream of east of that highway, eighty-five. Way it just, just grew like.
And they're going up to six hundred thousand up there.
Oh, yeah.
Population.
Well, they're gonna have their hands full here pretty quick if they don't stop what's going on in Denver with all the migrants, now they got forty thousand already.
I was just gonna say, well, Springs, you wanna grow, the state of Texas will take care of you.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Cheap labor. But I don't know, I still believe they gotta plug up that border.
It's like the faucet in your kitchen, you walk up to, what do you do, turn it, when you, when you're done, turn it off, it's no different than the border, you've got to turn that off.
Yep.
It's not that we don't wanna, we can't save the world, but the American people can us the world, something is good, I'm so grateful, it's hurts. Because people in Africa, I mean, all over the the world, you know, it's healthy, we can do it. I mean, we better take care of what we have.
And when we go and invest in those underdeveloped countries, we go and all we do is corrupt. Cause as you have a dictator and then he turns around and screws the country.
That's right.
With their resources that we that we need, that we helped set up.
Set up.
And that we sent, we allowed their kids to come here and get an education.
Yeah, well, this is like Saudi Arabia.
Yeah.
Why do you think we just bought the thing that's, it's the oil. It's the way it is, I'm so grateful.
I remember as a kid, they uh, they have a ton of Saudi Arabians come to Otero.
Oh, really? Yeah. Lot of them. Is there still a big uh population of foreign students that we have, V J, I haven't checked on that, I was just curious.
I forgot what uh, Marie, she's the in charge of international student relations. And I forgot, she told me a couple of weeks ago how many kids we have there. And I uh, I can't remember what she said.
As long as we're paying the bills and we got a good college sitting up here, that's all I, that's all I can ask.
Can't go wrong.
No, no. See, when I was a senior at school, we had the K-Voc up there in OJ C. And uh, I was your fowler at that time, and old Dave, the the choir proctor, he was one of my my buddy students, there's twelve of us in the class. The other day I ran into him, I go, we were in automotive class together, he, here he is cracking bones and I'm over here selling chips, so. But we, but we learned how to get along, John, Johnny Lucas was our our instructor.
And how to see things uh figuratively and and sequentially.
Yeah, we took what they gave us and took it to the next level, so it helped a lot. I'll never forget, old John, this kid come in, we have brand new books on this table and and John, he goes, Mister Lucas says, he goes, old guys, we didn't have no gals in, they're all guys. Not to touch their books. Okay, well, look what I, you're gonna learn right over here. Under the hood, around the vehicle, and we'll go for that. Now, you're gonna make mistakes, but could be a double. And the main thing you guys wanna do for me, look for the simple things first and then back backtrack, go, look at it simple and then backtrack. Cause if you, well, you think this is a particular problem with the engine and this and that, here you are tearing the whole thing about what it was all, it was the smart one that was out, it was something real simple. So, yeah, we learned, we learned quite a bit.
I like, I miss that K-Voc, I couldn't believe they.
Oh, yeah, why would you do that?
Yeah.
Cause there was some classes for kids.
You could go there and be an electrician.
A bricklayer.
Yeah, a bricklayer.
Uh, Mister Stoker, Bert Stoker, he used to run the class up there, in fact, he's my neighbor around the corner over there on Kent Street.
Where do you live now, did you move to Casa de Sol?
Where was that?
You did?
Oh, no, 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 I live on, I'm just around the corner.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Bert?
Bert lives right there, just around the corner by the stop sign, three fifty, that house that says, kind of, blood to brick.
And before he sold that other part of his land to the east, he always kept that thing weaved, weeded.
Well, that corner lot over there didn't belong to him.
Oh, it didn't?
It belonged to somebody else, he would not buy it.
Oh, it might have been the Hills.
Yeah, he, yeah, he.
George Hill.
Yeah.
Or Allen Hill.
Well, Allen's got property just uh.
North of.
North of me from the Wilders Backing Plant. He's got, he's got seven point two acres sitting right here. And then Bert went ahead and got from his place east, he ended up buying that four acres there, and then there was a a lot sitting right there that belonged in the city. Okay, well, I think that the city okay to annex that part of the parole bond to come in and do so. So, that part of, all of us in in there right now, we're all counted, except that one over there now. I always wondered, you know, from Sixth Street to Tenth Street. I always wondered, you know, from Sixth Street to Tenth Street, right down Highway three fifty, you know, how, how, why the city never, ever annex that whole, any whole thing together there? And then, what's his name, oh, Joe Kelly. He's, you know, I put a water meter on my place over there at, where the Wilders' Packet Plant, there's a trailer back there. I brought city water in, I said, okay. He says, yeah, there's a water line there, and they went ahead and did, and I paid for it and everything. He said, you know, the only thing I ever regretted was that water line that come from Sixth Street, they head right up to Highway three fifty to go to Tenth, it stopped right to where we call the music lady. That has the music place right there.
Oh, yeah.
Stops right there. He said, I don't know why they didn't make it a, a circle, so the water would be a lot easier to.
Yeah, available.
Available.
That's a good point.
Maybe someday it'll happen. But I know, I know, uh, one of the houses, other than the house up front there has city water, and I have city water. And then Music Lady's got city water, but Carol and Carson, uh, they live right there, right there by the Packet Plant. In fact, that's where Wilders used to live, and we subdivided that properties. They don't have city water in there. They got, we have a well there.
Oh.
Yeah, we have a big, we have a good well there. I own two thirds of that well, and they own one third of it. And we have two different properties there and the water comes in from the well into the basement of their house. A big, to me, it looked like a mini swimming pool. If you ever fell in, I don't think you'd ever get out. But that water's been there, been real good, they've had it tested, taken care of it, and supplies us all. And we have well water right there.
Does it taste pretty good?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm shocked. I figured I needed city water for my trailer, cause I, my trailer was being rental. I didn't want well water going to the rental property, cause, you know, and not that it was not good or not, but I just didn't want.
Did you, have you ever tried Campbell water and compared it to lawn, drinking water?
I, you know, I've had lawn, well, when you go to like, say Golden Corral or somebody like that, you order water, I, I, not too bad right there, I would think.
It is good at the Golden Corral.
Like, that's what I order all the time.
Same here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. My wife likes to go over there to, oh, I don't know, I don't know why, I mean, I mean, there's probably two good reasons why you leave there happy.
Yeah.
You get the selection and you get all what you need, it's no damn fault. For just a little bit less money.
That's right.
Compared to.
That's what I was telling the wife, I says, for what they charge here and what these other guys are doing, oh, Lord. And you get what you want.
My wife insists on going. She says, no way are we going to not.
Well, like, going to, say, Run Lobster or Olive Garden or Black Ivy.
Sixty, seventy-five dollars.
In a heartbeat.
Or we'll go to Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Well, they've gone up a little better, but chicken's always been high since the COVID deal, you know.
Yeah.
But, if you, uh, see, they opened up a place there in, uh, Lamar. They got, KFC came back there and put it in that pilot, uh, truck shop down there, so they got chicken down there. Most beginning, an Arby's down there, uh, right there by the subway. Just, uh, just south on the highway there, you know where the subway is right there?
And?
In Lamar.
Uh, right on fifty, isn't it?
Yeah, go on, yeah, go on fifty.
And they're gonna stick an Arby's there? Is that where the old, uh?
Man, I think they have, there was a building there or something.
Yeah, it was a burger joint, like they got up there, loaf and jug by Wal, uh, by Sam's.
Okay, well, they.
What's it called? Burger King.
Yeah.
Burger King's what it was.
No, Burger King's still there.
They are?
But they're, they're not working no more. I guess Burger King corporate came down and said, hey, you need gotta do this, this, and this to this building. And the other says.
I'm leaving.
Lock the door.
So there's no business being?
Not there at their building, no, but the one over there in the subway, just north of their building, that's where they're gonna put the Arby's. Kind of across from the, the Sonic and the McDonald's there. But you know, that's not a cheap place to go either.
Which one?
Arby's.
Oh, yeah. Only when they have a new meat.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna pay for that new meat.
Cause I pay, uh, I went when they had that double, uh, they had the regular Arby's meat.
Mm-hmm.
And then they put something else in it.
Uh, well, they got a hamburger now, so they're really proud of the hamburger they got now.
You know, throw this away.
They're probably taking a nap back there.
I think so.
No, for sure, I wanted to see, uh, Mr. Klein's last two meetings, well, as far as council meetings. First of the month and the third, you know.
The next one would be on a Tuesday, cause it's a holiday.
Oh, is that what it is?
The, the two, uh.
Oh, President's Day.
Yeah. Think it's a holiday.
Right, it's President's Day. I, my birthday's that week, so I.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's George Washington's birthday, so they celebrate Lincoln's birthday and, and, uh, George Washington's birthday on the same day, the nineteenth. Yeah, they poured concrete today, I think it was, over there on the bridges, over there on Kent Street. Where they came off the bridge and they kind of sloped it a little bit so the handicap vehicles and that could go down it, which was smart, cause they, there ain't no way they could put steps in it, you know. But I told Rick, I says, oh my god, buddy, I'm telling you, before you even poured any concrete, where were you putting that path, I mean, your trail? My god, we got kids down here in the noon. Between their little, uh, bikes, the motor crew.
Yeah.
And them little, little scooters and, and now you got the electric ones now and four wheeling, I go, you just made a runway, buddy. I go, well. Good luck. I wasn't quite sure where this was gonna come out, but I didn't realize it's gonna come back, back to my property, so. Well, they had to come up somewhere from the Aurora.
Yeah, cause of the, uh, the potential for flooding there.
Yeah, right. Well, we're, the, the way they put that, walk in there, they put it high enough, they take a lot of water to catch up where they're at like that. Like I said, don't get me wrong, I, I appreciate the lights that they're on, cause you'll be able to walk that still nice. So will the other people that we, the homeless and this and that.
You heard her mention that, multi-mobile?
Yeah.
We've been looking for that for four or five years now. We went to all kinds of different buildings to try to set something up that was basically for tourist attraction. And if we put it by the tree, it's gonna be, well, it's a place for the homeless.
Well, my boy's down coffee, I'm about one of the youngest ones there, you know. Anyways, I says, yeah. They went and built those brand new bathrooms right over there on Tenth Street. I go, are you kidding me? Why did they put it right there? Where they really needed it to be, it's a little closer down to the fair, the playground, so the kids to use it. Now they're gonna run up there to go use the bathroom, it's gonna be locked. Oh, I, I just, I'm just saying.
I think it'd be open during the day and close it, like the parks.
I would, I would think, but you know yourself, Ed.
Mild winters. You can't lock them up.
Can't lock them up. Can't lock them up. And we go by there all the time, cause of course I live right down the street from the hospital and everything and what I do and. We're there, we're down the highway, I mean, that street every day, two, three times. And I went and stopped there the other day just to check it out. I said, this is, this is pretty neat little building there. I saw the, the cam, the camera over there up to the left, and then it had this big, uh, uh, well, I guess where they could talk to it and, and open doors or whatever, and I'm going, wow.
Oh, it does? I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a key thing there that I'm sure that all they have to do somewhere here, they just, they just automatically, there's a.
Radio.
Radio, yeah, radio tower right there.
Radio waves.
Right, right. Next time you go by, check that out. Pretty nice, I mean.
What if somebody's in there?
Well, there's a, you know, on the door it says vacant or not vacant, so they'll be able.
As soon as that comes out the first time, it'll lock automatically.
Yeah.
We hope.
We hope. Well, they did a lot of work and city's done a lot of manpower to clean up that Aurora to make this thing look pretty. That's just gonna be an ongoing job, because, well, the moisture's right there to take care of the growth that's going on.
Yeah.
I've seen the boys back down there several times.
And I think, I think they're putting that rock up on the, on that street side. Cause I saw, I saw them digging up the side so that they can keep the weeds out of it.
Out of it?
Yeah.
The only thing bad about rock is, uh, I have, I have landscaped it too with rock in it and, uh, between the leaves and, and dirt flying, you have to spray, because the dirt does get in the rocks a little bit. Can't really do too much about that, because the seeds will get in there and they'll just start to go, so all you gotta do is spray it, get rid of them, that's all you can do. Now, when the leaves are in there, I go get my leaf blower and blow them out of the rock and pile them up and get them.
I don't think anybody's, the high school put that rock in on the stadium. And I don't think we've had problems with that rattlers getting in there.
Yeah, you're pretty close to the prairie over there, you know.
But I would always use caution, caution there, because that's why the college is named Rattlers.
That's right. And that, that, that little frisbee course down there by the hill, I go, the hill right there, going up to the hos, that frisbee course there.
You better be careful.
Yes.
And you better do that in the winter.
In the winter, yes.
And have your competitions in the winter, or somebody might get sued.
Well, I tell you, it, uh, it, well, you know, when they had that Barney Rock last year, uh, for the St. Patty's deal, that they put the rock out there and people went and go chase it after.
Oh, yeah.
That's where it was at. In fact, you know, I just did, just have something to do one day, got all the, I says, what? It's here somewhere, and I think I walked by it several times, and some old homeless guy found it, I guess, from what I heard. I said, I'll be there. I says, hey, be careful, wherever you going over there, just be careful, cause it's not, looks pretty, uh.
Do you own that, those buildings in that, on that Fourth Street? Where the Texaco distribution was?
Yes, I own that one.
Oh, you do? Cause that's gonna be a historical significance, I think.
Yeah, they've already talked to me.
Oh, have they?
Of course.
Yeah. Cause I remember going to there as a kid on my way to the swimming pool. Or going down to the Arroyo.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and playing down there. And the guy would, uh, always tell us, hey, you kids, get the hell out of there.
Well, see, on the east side of the, that building of mine, I didn't touch my, uh, loading docks. So those are original loading docks, and the way it's shaped, you could tell that the railroad cars came along there to unload their fifty-five gallon barrels. Rolled them inside my warehouse there, they're ten foot, they're ten foot tall from inside there. So they stacked them all in there and, oh, yeah, this, and I still got my, the round Texaco star on the east side of that building.
You still got it?
I still got it. Well, it's on, it's painted into the wall, but you can still see it up there. And if you, if you walk that a little bit, you could tell where the railroad tracks went back there in the back to come around there, then make the loop around, uh, Valley Plumbing. It went right across Third Street on the other side of the, uh.
You can see that?
Oh, yeah, you could, well, you could, you could feel the way the curve is.
Oh.
The way the property is. And you, I've been there long enough.
Yeah, cause they're, they're elevated.
Right.
Yeah. You know.
Pretty interesting.
Uh, Rick Klein was telling me years ago that, uh, on a foggy day, cold foggy day. You could see where the track went from Fifth Street to Third.
Oh, really? Well, you do that today, too.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, well.
But you gotta get the right fog.
Well, the, the temperature has to be a certain, because those wooden ties down there grab that, and they just frost right there at the top. Here, while back on Fourth Street, right in front of my warehouse, there was a, uh, I think, one or two railroad ties that were just kind of sticking up, because the erosion. I told Rick, I says, I need some road base back there to cover that up and, oh, yeah, somebody else decided that, uh, I, well, I didn't catch him in time. Had a back hole there from the city, pulled him right out. I go, who gave you the okay to do this? Well, I think it was a city engineer at that time. And I told Rick, I says, he did what? I go, yeah, they're gone. He would not have, but what are you gonna do? They're already gone.
Yeah.
Can't replace.
How long ago was this?
Last year.
Last year?
Yes, sir. I remember that.
We got a new engine.
Your boy, your boy, one of your boys is still working for the city that was on the back hole, on that back hole, that did it.
Randy.
I could, no, it wasn't Randy. He was a Hispanic kid, nice kid, go, I've known him for whatever. And don't get me wrong, he did a good job cleaning the mess up, but he says, Bob, I only did what I was told to do. I go, well, that's not right, whatever. I don't know.
That was Marty.
Marty.
Marty been in there forty minutes.
Been there, I don't know, already?
Holy cow.
We have midnight snack tonight for Bob.
Yep. Same here.
Well, I wanted to make sure I got to see Klein's last meeting, that's good. But don't get me wrong, I've learned a lot and, uh, been, like I said, been an old valley boy, it's kind of interesting to me. I like history. I love Ohio.
That's me.
They don't call us a junction. I tell people that every day, you see the highway right there? It takes you to Trinidad. You see this highway over here? Takes you to camp. You see this highway over here? Takes you to Lamarck. You see this someone over here? Takes you to Sharona.
What's that town? Cheyenne Wells?
Cheyenne Wells.
And on the way, you can see all these historical facts in those little towns.
The Santa Fe Trail goes right in front of our house. I mean, that's the, the real thing that goes up that way.
Original.
Original, right, yep.
Cause the only thing you are able to see now is the, uh, what do you call it, the, uh, Santa Fe Trail Auto Round.
Auto Round, that's what it is. We got that sign up there in front on Highway three fifty, yeah.
But the original, it's scattered throughout town.
Oh, yeah, I bet, I bet. No, I told the guy, it's gone. As a kid, I remember Highway fifty used to go right down, went right down, uh, Third Street. I mean, that was our highway here in La Hana.
Yep. Where that bridge is, we used to go fishing over there.
There you go.
Catch some carp?
Carp?
I don't know.
Carp?
Oh, yeah, I could always watch it online and say, uh.
Interesting. Well, they'll post it, the whole video, they'll post it to you.
We're not done, okay, are we on our schedule?
Yeah. I think we're on the backside of it.
Well, they just have their, their reports left, so. I'll watch it later and tell you if there's anything interesting. Well, I don't know when they'll post it, I don't know if they'll post it.
Adrian didn't make it tonight, huh? No, he's, what the heck's that deal there? He used to rent from me. Oh, thank you.
He's overwhelmed.
Yeah, he is. You know, he, he rented, you know that duplex I had, Dr. Bobby, I walked back? He's having trouble over there with the, the two trailers that are on that, uh, thrice? Nice as fuck, there's two big trailers there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Adrian used to, when he first started out, him and his wife rented the duplex from him. Yeah, and he, boy, his wife is, she's a wildcat. Well, kept him alive, kept him alive.
She is.
But he's a go-getter, that kid. My God, he's here, there, and how come and why?
When he first started, after he left the radio, I gave him all encouragement. I gave him a couple hundred dollars to start him out. Cause I felt for him. Cause he wasn't getting the, uh, support from the city or the tourism board that he thought, he and I thought should be.
Well, they, yeah, because he was promoting what, what he was doing.
Yeah.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah. And the city was, uh, was still, uh, hooked on the newspapers.
Yeah.
Now look what happened.
Yeah.
Now he's overwhelmed and the newspapers are overwhelmed.
Yeah. I think a road downstairs, you can just go to bathroom up here.
Yeah.
Right there, good. Looking right at it.
Right.
I'll see if we can triple going downstairs.
What, Betty?
Are they still, still collecting?
They're probably talking about two, two subject matters. The one they had scheduled here. And the one for the interim city manager.
There was another subject besides the city manager thing?
Huh?
I didn't know there was another subject they might be discussing besides the city manager position. It makes sense that Bill should be the manager until they find somebody.
I would've done that from the beginning. Nobody up there has experience on that.
I, I never-
I've done it three times.
It never crossed my mind. Of course it would be Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's more credentialed than Rick.
Yeah, Bill is a very smart boy, man.
The only thing he, he lacking is his, um, public speaking.
Yeah, it's hard to hear him.
That's why he, uh, he left the school board. People were, I used to go to school boards when he was president, they used to meet at the college. People would always tell him from the back, we can't hear you.
Yeah. I thought it was just me.
Yeah. I knew it wasn't me.
I can't hear anybody that mumbles.
Yeah.
I can't hear Paul.
When you get up here and you start talking to him, they forgot, whoa, wait, but we gotta turn this on first.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, I think it was Rick that said he didn't know why they didn't do something about making the city council members audible to the audience because very few people can hear them.
Paul de la Square is the same way. He gets up there and starts talking to you. Can't hear you anymore.
I can hear Phil Mallop. And then I'm sitting right under him. And I can hear, I can hear Joe just fine.
Yeah, he's-
Yeah, but it don't, it don't hurt from the audience to say, I can't hear you, and they'll run away.
I've said that, I think, about three times.
Yeah.
And that's okay. Even when I was sitting up there, can't hear you, man.
How many years were you up there, Ed? I know you've been a quick-
Eight.
Yeah, you're, you're always audible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I had intended to serve is two terms. That's the longest ten minutes I've ever seen.
Yeah, it is a little long, isn't it?
Yeah, they've-
Yeah. I, I have taken myself off the streets driving after dark because for some reason I've got something magic wrong with my eyes.
Yeah, that, you gotta have those to kinda see the-
As long as I'm standing under a street light, I'm fine. But if I don't have light, everything just kinda disappears into darkness. I had kinda, kinda decided that I didn't need to hitch a ride last week. I decided I didn't when I couldn't see the sidewalk when I got home.
You. I'm on a, I'm in a meeting, I'll be out in about an hour. I don't, I don't, I'll talk to you later. The deer herd, did you hear about them?
Are you talking to me?
A herd of deer was running through Third Street.
Oh, really?
From the, uh, the construction part of the, where they laying all the concrete.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
Yeah. See, we had a funeral there by the Arroyo between Fourth and Fifth Streets on, um, ma- not Maple, but what's the street there? Yeah, it must be Maple.
Maple.
Huh?
Maple.
Yeah. And there was, uh, as soon as we had the guns go off, twenty-one gun salute. Cause that guy who passed away, he wanted his ashes thrown down there in the Arroyo.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, he asked permission.
Huh?
They asked permission for him to come on my property to go ahead and-
Oh, they did?
Yeah. Yeah, they wanted to go down there. I says, well, what are we doing? And I said, they explained to me, cause they were all down there on the property. I go, what's going on, guys? After they told me what was going on, I go, you got my permission. Take your time and do what you gotta do.
He was a Vietnam vet.
Uh, are, are you talking about the Arroyo on the west side?
Mm-hmm.
On Third Street.
Right by his place.
Right by Valley Plumbing. All he wanted-
Oh, wait a minute. I'm thinking of west is east.
Well, you know where Valley Plumbing is, right?
We're working on.
You know where Valley Plumbing is.
Right, Valley Plumbing.
Yeah, and the new park is right there on that Arroyo.
No, the park, the park's down there on Tenth Street, where, where you're at, the other park, okay.
Yeah.
All, all he wanted was his ashes to be scattered and a shot of tequila, and he was happy. That's all he asked. And when I went over there to check on him, my God, we must've had about, what, thirty, forty cars over there.
It was about eighty to a hundred people.
Yeah, it, it was quite a, last Saturday.
Felix Graeda.
He was a war vet.
Say, say his name again.
Felix Graeda.
I think I knew him. He had-
But anyway, as soon as that gunfire was over,
Uh-huh.
shortly afterward, a herd of deer came out of that area.
Oh, a herd.
A herd.
Oh, my gosh.
Now, over there at Wilderness Packing Plant, over there by Hills Place, over our place over there.
Mm-hmm.
I saw ten of them the other day.
On Saturday?
No, this, no, one Saturday, it was about a week ago.
Oh.
So they, they're out and about there between Tenth Street and Sixth Street over there by Highway three fifty. There was ten of them.
Yeah.
I mean, they're beautiful.
And Fifth on Highway three fifty, Highway three fifty.
The Trinidad.
The Trinidad.
Trinidad. My phone just went off.
Yeah.
I left my phone at home.
And it's flashing, too.
And they were headed east, Betty. They were headed east.
The deer.
The deer.
Okay, and east is-
They were headed from Valley Plumbing all the way over to the Capri.
Oh, for heaven's sakes. I know where the Capri is.
And they didn't-
I called that anymore.
They did not wait for any red lights or green lights.
They were just running. Were they running along the street?
Mm-hmm.
Let me see.
And on the courthouse, uh, grass.
Well, I can't figure out who called me. Oh, is Adrian? Hey, did you just call me? Uh, yes, I got a ride with, um, Shandra because she offered, uh, the last time I saw her, and I thought I wouldn't bother you. It's still playing? Oh, yeah. Oh. About the, the local herd of deer?
Huh?
Yeah. Oh, so we're being livestreamed, guys?
Uh-oh.
Okay. You two, and, uh, I'll ask you again, I was a little concerned that, uh, I was, uh, uh, that the car is a little bit low. Yeah, and you, is it okay? Well, okay, I'll call you again if, if it's not too much trouble for you. Oh, bless you, okay. Next time I'll call you because now I have to wait till the executive session is over. They're in it. Yeah, well, they've already taken action on the interim. They, it suddenly dawned on somebody that Bill has been assistant city manager for quite a while. So it only makes sense that he should be the interim city manager. And it didn't, it didn't even dawn on me. Uh-huh. Oh, okay, okay. Will do. Okay. Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Adrian said we were being broadcast.
Oh, are we?
Yeah.
Who, us?
Us?
We are?
Yeah.
Where's this camera at?
Posted the video of the deer.
Was that it right there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, uh, do you, if you know, I, I don't know how to use my phone very well.
You're like me, I'm old school, I don't really-
I just- But he said he just posted on the Seaford News.
Oh, yeah?
Uh, the video he, uh, took of the deer riding.
Of the deer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And if I knew how-
They're pretty healthy, the last time I saw them, they're pretty healthy.
Yeah, a lot of animals come up and down that Aurora.
Oh, are you, uh, is your place on the Arroyo?
Uh, yes, Betty. Yeah, I get to see quite a bit.
I bet you do.
Well, my warehouse is, I should say, uh, I live just outside of Highway three fifty over here around Tenth Street.
You know, the, uh, uh, whole Aurora, uh, project was originally flood control.
I can see why, cause I've seen some water come down that baby sometimes.
I bet, I guess.
Well, I've never seen it dry. I've never seen that, that Aurora dry.
That's interesting. How long have you lived here?
I'm s- well, I've lived in the valley for seventy-two years.
Seventy-two?
I was born here in Lahana.
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
I lived in Mans and all until the tenth grade. Went to Fallon, graduated there. Lived in Rocky Ford from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty. I've been in Lahana area ever since then.
Wow.
So I'm an old valley boy.
I, I get the idea that this place used to be more populated than it is now.
And Ed could verify that, too. Yeah, we, we used to have what? Ten, twelve thousand people here, Ed, one time?
During the twenties.
Yeah, we had quite a few.
Twenty in the boom.
Yeah, I think down the line in the future, the way things happening in the front range, the way the cost of living is up that way, I think we might be seeing more coming our way. I really do.
That would be good because we've evidently lost some things-
Oh, yeah, we've lost-
That we used to have. Well, one thing is, people would fix things in your house. I've had two companies go out of business retiring, you know? Since I've lived here, and I've lived here about forty years.
That's like the boys over there, uh, Valley Plumbing and Lyles Plumbing and Morgan's, his glass, all family, uh, companies. And every time I see them, I just shake their hands, like, I don't know, Bob, I don't know how long we could do this. The next generation's not coming up.
Sorry, Betty, did you take a nap? My grandkids are in, uh, Denver.
Oh, I see. I got up for my nap. It's still ground up, yeah.
True. Betty's stuck in hell. Shakers were right. Yeah, sorry. Oh. That's why. She's not here cause she wants to be.
Where am I? What day is it? What time is it?
Uh, so there will be no action at this time. Committee and board report.
Any committee and board reports?
I attend.
There you go.
I attended the senior center advisory board on the la, the last Thursday, just wanted to advise the public, there is a San Antonio trip, May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, they have thirty-six people signed up, which means a trip will go, and I believe they have room for fifty-six.
San Antonio?
To San Antonio. Looking to restart dances, uh, just, in just a couple of months with a variety of music and times to accommodate those people that do not like driving at night. They're now going to be doing bingo at the senior center on the eighth, twenty-second, and the twenty-ninth, starting at ten-thirty a.m. Uh, the reason this came about is because hospice has had a volunteer shortage, and, uh, one of the things that they quit doing is, is bingo, so the senior center's taking that over. And that's it, that's all I have for board report.
Thank you, Paul, any other governing, uh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I do have one other item. Uh, the discussion for renting out the senior center again has been tabled till next month, okay? Uh, so that is something that we'll look at, where the board will look at. Right now, it costs sixty-three dollars a day to run the senior center, so if they're going to rent it, there's going to have to be some offset to those costs, but that's been tabled.
When did they stop renting it?
Covid.
Okay. What was the price then, do you know?
Twenty-five dollars an hour.
An hour?
An hour.
And it's sixty-three a day?
It's sixty-three a day, so that's where we're at, so.
I think they have one of those fourteen-hour liquor licenses.
You can't have liquor at the senior center.
You can't have liquor at the senior center, man.
Point well taken.
Uh, committee, other committee and board reports, anyone? Anyone? No? Um, there's no city manager comments tonight. Uh, I did get a text from Todd, and it's, it's kind of like, um, I don't know how you say, so during the Fourth of July, uh, when fireworks go off, we kind of know the area of where it's at. So there was no shooting, shell casings found at the fifteen-hundred block of Bellevue, um, but that's where the report came from, so it, it could have been anywhere in that area, it could have been in one of the other station, uh, sites, so we just don't know the exact area, but that's what was reported on. Yeah, my, my wife heard it, but I said it's fireworks, but I guess it wasn't. Um, governing body comments, do we have any governing body comments?
I have two fifteens.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, so, just Otero, we've got, um, our design, uh, group is meeting for the fourth time, the public forum, and I attended the one for faculty and staff, um, last week. There's some really interesting things that the architects are going to be putting forward for the, um, the, the strategic plan, the master plan for, um, Otero that I think a lot of people in the city of Lahana would be interested in tomorrow night, five-thirty to seven-thirty. If you all want to hang out again, we can do that at the Mazuta banquet room. Um, Jeremiah, I know you'll be gone, but the rest of you are welcome to be there. Um, and then also, we have a lunch and learn with students from Brazil at twelve-fifteen on Wednesday in the already comments. Um, when then, those were my two things, but then, uh, Burke and Tyler Park, I, I had already talked to Rick about this, but, um, signage, I had, uh, some folks contact me about, like, we all know where it is, cause we've been, I mean, I can kind of see it from my house, but like, a lot of, there's people that don't know how to get there, like, you drive down Tenth, and it's not obvious how to get there, so. Um, just looking forward to all the signage put in, so people know where it is, and it's pretty, pretty exciting, so, that's it.
Very exciting.
Who's your speaker for Wednesday?
Brazil, my students from Brazil, there's a bunch of them.
Carnival.
Exactly, and Carnival kicks off on Friday, so I told them to please incorporate them.
Any other governing body comments?
Just that we had the annual chamber of commerce banquet, I don't, I know we had mentioned about it happening and that it was a successful banquet and sold out tables, it was a, another good banquet, looking forward to next year.
This year? What did this year?
Well, yeah, the next banquet.
Well, you just skip right to banquet, don't we, yeah?
She just scares us.
But a long day.
Is that that twelve-hour weekend? Any other governing body comments?
I, I was asked by, uh, mister, by, by a citizen that, I was advised and then asked, uh, the American Legion has lost their meeting space, so if anybody out there has any space available, so that, that American Legion can have, host their monthly meetings, uh, let me know and I'll get in touch with the citizen, so.
Do you know when they have them?
They were having them there, I believe, at Second and Steam, there's an old motorcycle shop.
Oh, I remember that, yeah.
Do they burn people? Or something to that sort, or could they be used in the library meeting or something of that?
I don't know if they even thought about that, so.
Yeah, how, how many meet, how many are there and what time do they meet?
I don't know.
Come on, Paul.
Actually, uh, we have, we're looking for space that we can bring in our equipment and all our awards and all that.
Oh.
Recognitions.
Okay, so you need more of a permanent home than a meeting space, got it, okay.
Okay, well, how many members, I guess, we don't leave that question unanswered.
We have seventy-two.
And you meet once a month?
Once a month, and we probably have, uh, fifteen to twenty at the meeting.
I was, I was gonna ask how many active.
Yeah.
But we're a bunch of old guys.
Not millennials.
I, I have some joke.
Go ahead, David.
In conjunction with Otero County College, uh, Girls in the Middle Conference twenty-twenty-four is slated for March second. Girls in the Middle, of course, is an organization focused on inspiring fifth through eighth grade, uh, girls in STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Lot of local sponsorship, so, uh, all those businesses out there, schools, Colorado School of Mines, Southeast Colorado, AHEC, uh, CBNT, CCOM, SECPA, Otero County Health Department, Los Angeles, Women's Civic Club, First National Bank, Martin Pipe and Steel, Los Alamos School District, and the Sign Shop, uh, all sponsors, uh, they thank you for that. Date is March second, registration is open for that through February ninth, uh, two hundred participants and easy fill-up, so.
Thanks for remembering that.
Anything else, Damon?
No.
Anyone else? Yeah?
No.
Um, so, also, Science Fair, um, is, is this weekend at, uh, the Otero Jim Rizzuto Room as well too, it's, uh, eighth, ninth, and tenth, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, so the fair on Thursday or Friday, and then awards on Saturday.
Yeah, so make sure you go check that out. Um, so I was at my quarterly, uh, Colorado Workforce Development Council with the government, uh, the governor, uh, three weeks ago, and, uh, it went really, really well, they took us on a tour of ULA, uh, which is United Launch Alliance, uh, they do rockets out of Denver, uh, behind SpaceX, they're the largest, uh, launcher of rockets into, to orbit that we have. Um, they introduced us to four young, uh, adults, um, and they, they said that they're actually thinking of starting their own college, uh, because the engineers that they get, um, they learn engineering with gravity, and it messes them up to where what they need them for is they need to retrain them on, you know, doing stuff without gravity. Uh, so that they're, they're looking at rural areas, um, to partner with, to get these kids at a younger age, um, you know, because sometimes we just think of ag and, and stuff like that. Um, so there will be talks with, uh, President Zant and, um, the superintendent of our schools here, to see if, if there's any way we can, we can come together. The governor also talks about tarantulas when he recognizes us, um, in, in these meetings. Um, and then the other thing that they talked to us about was quantum computing, um, and we had a speaker, uh, go through the very basics of quantum computing, cause I think we would still be there if he was, uh, trying to give us all the, the details on it. Uh, but that's also in his, his words, where you don't have to be, you know, a brain surgeon to do these jobs, there's also other jobs involved in quantum computing that they train for, um, and they looking for communities with strong, uh, industrial parks and stuff like that, to where, you know, you're not actually building the computer, but you're helping build proponents that make up these computers, so. That's another thing we should be looking at for, for our area. Uh, and then I was invited to Lamar, um, they do what they call the tri-state nine-eleven, um, memorial, which is right on Highway fifty. Um, there was a, a gentleman who does this, his name is Doug Harbor, he's a former Marine, a Marine with a dream, he calls himself, and he was just sitting at home around ten years ago, and he noticed that there was no mention of nine-eleven when it came up. And he said, how are my grandkids and, you know, future generations gonna know about this event that took place if we're not really celebrating it anymore, not celebrating, but honoring it, honoring the memory? Uh, so he went to his county commissioners and he asked if he can get some money to maybe have a parade. Uh, so they had a parade the first year, and then they raised some money, they had another parade, and then they, you know, they got a memorial built, and then now that memorial is bigger, it has its own, uh, shaded area, they have a, a statue, a bronze statue, and they said, you know, we want to be sister cities with Lahana, but every nine-eleven celebration is usually the second Saturday in September, and that's our early settlers' day. Uh, so it's hard for us to get down there, uh, and do all that, but this year, this is gonna be one of the few years where it doesn't fall on early settlers' day. Um, but if you guys change it, then, then all bets are off. Um, but, uh, they talked about, um, Yenene Betrou, and I just want to put this on record, cause it was really cool. Uh, Yenene Betrou, I don't know if you guys have heard of him, uh, he's a doctor, he attended high school, uh, at the Abbey School in Colorado. Um, he worked in medical affairs, uh, for the hospital company in Burbank, one of the pioneers in a new practice of medicine referred to as hospitalist care. He traveled around the country to train hundreds of physicians. He immigrated here, um, with the promise of taking care of his, uh, grandma and her friends when he got old, when they, they got older. Uh, he was a friend, a role model, and mentor to his younger siblings, who often say, all of our accomplishments are because of his guidance. In June of nineteen ninety-eight, when his grandmother became ill, he flew back to Ethiopia to aid her doctors. Due to lack of equipment and supplies, she unfortunately passed away. With poor facilities and absent equipment, the sick have little chance of survival, he said. With a renewed sense of responsibility, Doctor Betrou vowed to help enhance the condition of medical facilities in Ethiopia, beginning the process of creating a kidney dialysis clinic in, uh, present-day Ethiopia. Given the lack of kidney dialysis machines, persons with kidney failures had zero chance of survival. Investing his own time and money, Doctor Betrou acquired over a half a dozen dialysis machines and supplies, it was while Doctor Betrou was working with the Ethiopian government to designate the proper location for the clinic, that the terrorist attacks of September eleventh took his life and ended his dream. He was only thirty-five and just beginning his life in years of education and planning for the future. That was one person out of twenty-nine-hundred who we lost that day, and that impact is gonna be huge. So what this tri-state memorial does is they find a different person every year to honor, to remember, uh, and I just thought that was huge, so they're gonna be doing some, uh, different stuff, they would like us to partake if we can, so when we get more information on that, I'll give you guys the, um, details on that, but I thought, you know, that was a citizen who saw a need, and instead of just, you know, saying, you know, we should do something, he, he put boots on the ground and, and he got it done, so if you guys go through Lamar, you see that little memorial site, take a stop, uh, they actually have a rock from, uh, the Pentagon, Pentagon crash site there, uh, that you could check out, you could sign the guestbook and, and just really do that, so I, I thought that was really cool, and I wanted to share that with everyone. And then with that, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn, oh, no, nope, nope, you want to set a special meeting date?
We'll plug in your laptop, so.
What do we have, where's my calendar? So we're not doing Valentine's Day or Tuesdays?
I'm free during the Super Bowl.
No.
I think that would be a good time.
Thursday.
How about Thursday, the fifteenth?
Can we not do Monday?
Five, or Monday, the twelfth, does Monday work, or it's just not? Okay, no, no, Paul, Monday. Are you here the fifteenth, Paul?
What day is the fifteenth?
Thursday?
Yes.
Damon? Jeremiah? Sharon? Lisa? All right?
I'm looking for Jacoby's schedule. I think it'd be okay.
Five-thirty? Five-thirty-five, everybody? Okay. And then you'll post that for us now?
Yes. That'll work perfect.
Okay, there we go. It is solidified. All right, now it will adjourn us, thank you all, have a good night.
What day is that meeting?
Thursday the fifteenth, and I.